Follow me to order and can join me for the pledge of allegiance.
With my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no proclamations or public comments petitions or morals. We have two employees we would like to recognize. And so for this first one, Don Kuntz, if you'd like to come up and try to join, if I could come up as well. They're up here. We need to give this to you because it's dangerous, my answer. I'm gonna make him talk. Now, Don, we have this plaque representing you from the city of High Waltham. It says, "This is presented to Don Kuntz in recognition of twenty years of dedication and service to the High Waltham Volunteer Fire Department from October two thousand four to October twenty twenty four." So I can't actually keep it in verse. And before I say anything, I'm gonna go ahead and, or instead of me saying something, I'm gonna let Patrick say anything he'd like to, because he probably knows you a lot better than I do.
This is Don's flag for twenty years of service to the High Waltham Fire Department. He retired at the end of this twenty years of service with us. This is something that we've done in the past. Don was instrumental in not only me, but a lot of the younger guys that came along to the fire department, training us, helping us along the way, showing us things. So, Don, thank you very much for everything. Really appreciate it, sir. I had a great time.
Thank you.
And then the next person we would like to recognize, it's got a few more years to go, and Chad Gobin, if you'd like to come up here. So this is a five-year service award, just to thank Chad Gobin for his five years of service to the city of High Waltham. So, thank you very much, sir. And instead of me talking, I'm gonna let Brad do the honors.
Yeah, so Chad has been with the city for five years now, and in that time, I mean, he has been instrumental. I mean, I've learned so much from him as far as electricity goes. He's a very, very dedicated employee, and we're just really lucky to have employees that like to, that we can retain with the quality of Chad Gobin. We are lucky to have him.
You're welcome. Always nice to do the good things. Like to recognize things like that. Moving on to the consent agenda. Brad, is there anything you needed to add, or are there any questions from the commissioners?
I don't think I have.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. What's second?
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Not, Don?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain from the minutes.
So the motion passed, and we still say five zero? Yeah. With one abstention from the minutes. Okay, no whole business, so moving on to the new business. For the number one would be appointment of commission representative to the High Waltham land bank. Brad?
So, we need to have the commissioner serve on the High Waltham way bank for a three-year term, starting in January fourth, twenty twenty five. So we would, we would need a commissioner that is willing to serve on that from the current, three commissioners that are, that are willing to be moving forward. So, I'd like to, I didn't know whether we had any commissioners that were interested. I know that we had recommended Dave Midnor before. I wasn't, I'm not sure that anybody had talked to him about that before that. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not all experienced Dave for something that he doesn't necessarily wanna do. And so we, I'd like just to discuss who we, who we'd like to serve on this, uh, way bank for the three-year term.
I'm certainly willing to let Dave continue on if he's interested. Brian, I don't know if you have an opinion on this one?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I just see it's a three-year term, and I don't know. He's got two years left on the board. I don't know if that's a problem, but other than that, I have no issue.
I think if, yeah, I, I, that's something that we can always fix, if that's an issue. So, Dave, are you, do you have any issue with this?
I don't have an issue with that. If anybody else wanted to do it, I'd let them. I'll do it. No problem.
Okay, do we just, we don't need a motion for this, do we?
Yeah, yes.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to have Dave Midnor be the commission representative, serve on the High Waltham land bank for a three-year term, beginning January fourth. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Not, Don?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Oh, it's staying.
Okay, four zero, one one, with Commissioner Midnor abstaining. At least he had voted aye.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to number two, suspending policy O dash one.
So in our personnel policies, we have a policy for the use of city equipment. The High Waltham Chamber of Commerce has asked for Santa to arrive this year on a fire truck for the lighting ceremony on November thirtieth. And so much like what we do with the Halloween parade, every year when we suspend that policy, so families arrive on the fire trucks. We would need to suspend this policy, so Santa can arrive on the fire truck. So I would just ask that we suspend policy O one and authorize Santa's arrival for the Christmas light ceremony on November thirtieth by a fire truck.
So, is this spending it indefinitely, or just for this night?
Just for that night, just for that one purpose.
Santa's busy.
Yeah, we're not gonna help Santa deliver presents.
It'd be bad if Santa were. Which fire truck? I mean, we don't still have, do we still have the old one? I should, I should know this.
We still do, yes.
Would that be the one we use?
If that's what Santa wants to arrive in.
Well, wouldn't it be cool? Because it's the Christmas ornament, right?
Uh, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Do you not have the one?
Yes, I do. But it has been several years since that one has, right?
I'll see what I can do. I will trust that you and Santa will get it figured out.
We will.
Okay, so we didn't hear.
I've been dealing with the zels, okay?
Okay.
Well, I recommend that we suspend policy, is it O one, O dash one? And authorize Santa's arrival to the Christmas light ceremony on November thirtieth by the fire truck, whichever one. Patrick just signed some.
Is that a second, Brian?
Yeah, I'll second.
It's been moved in second to suspend policy O dash one. Any further discussion? Not, Don?
All in favor?
Aye. All votes? Motion passed five zero. Be careful, Santa, be safe. Yes, I want my presents. Moving on to number three, budget amendments.
So, looking through the twenty twenty four budget, I came across, I originally thought we were gonna have three funds that would need a budget amendment. After looking at it a little bit closer today, apparently we only have two funds that are gonna need a budget amendment for this year. That'd be both the water and the sewer fund. This was, this is caused by, especially on the sewer side, we had some maintenance issues this year that we had to deal with. We purchased a extra evaporator from the pond for the water department. Those were the major purchases that caused our, that caused the need for these budget amendments. Right now, this is, really looking at this, this is going to be us publishing for the hearing on December ninth, or the public hearing on December ninth to adopt that, to adopt that amended budget. And so, I would just like to discuss that. I would, I would just like authorization to publish for the budget amendments for the public hearing on December ninth.
I'll make a motion to authorize our city administrator to publish the budget amendments that were proposed, whether they're included or packeted, with the public hearing to be held on December ninth at the regular meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Not, Don?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All votes?
Motion passed five zero. Number four, the asphalt zipper.
Good evening, everybody. On November twenty fifth, bids were open for the sale of the twenty thirteen asphalt zipper five hundred B two oh three. This item was set up for sale for the lack of use, and its sale can help the street department financially. The sale of this item had been open publicly, publicly to bids. And my recommendation is, I recommend we sell the asphalt zipper to Brown County for the bid amount of forty-three thousand dollars.
Any questions or anything on this? So in the times that we wouldn't use it, what would you, what would you now, or do we not have a use for it at all?
So for the size of the zipper that it is, we don't have a lot of use, and we don't have a lot of, and we really, it's a lack of personnel that we have in order to operate that. While we were thinking, while we had been discussing it around the Public Works Department, the Special Response is that we use a, an attachment for the skids here. It does very much the same thing that the asphalt zipper did on a, on a smaller scale. And it just allows, we use it on Laurel Avenue when we patched that here just a month and a half ago. And so I would propose that we purchase that attachment for the, for the skids here. And that still allows us to be able to do, do that work on a smaller scale. And it makes it more efficient for our personnel to be able to do that work. And so that's why I'm recommending it.
Any other thing, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the asphalt zipper to Brown County at a price of forty-three thousand dollars.
Oh, so good.
It's been moved in second to approve the sale of the asphalt zipper. Any further discussion? Not, Don?
All in favor?
Aye.
All votes?
Motion passed five zero. And Don? And moving on to the water meters.
Kevin?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond council, presenting a resolution this evening that would authorize water meter improvements and the issuance of bonds to finance the costs of those improvements. And so I prepared a short resolution that recites the applicable statute, which is a, a pretty broad and, and general statute that authorizes various public water supply system improvements and equipment and the issuance of general obligation bonds for those improvements. And so that is simply what the resolution does. It describes the project, which is the acquisition, installation, and construction of water meter improvements to benefit the public water supply system. And it authorizes project financing with an estimated cost of eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars and general obligation bonds of the city authorized to pay those costs. That is an estimate. There's nothing that requires the city to issue that amount of bonds, obviously, if the, if the project cost is, is different than that. So the actual sizing of the bonds will be based on either actual costs, or, or there will be comfort that the, the estimate that's used will work. And sometimes that occurs. An estimate can be used, but you wanna be a little conservatively high and maybe have a little bit of bond proceeds left at the end. So that's what this does. One of the key things it does in section three, and this is a federal tax item, it recites that with this resolution, you preserve your right to reimburse any cash that you spend on this project going back sixty days from this resolution and any thing going forward. And that sometimes becomes a thing on, on bond issues. And there are actually some federal restrictions related to tax exempt bonds about how far back you can go to reimburse costs. So this takes care of that. One of the exceptions to that is engineering and other sort of preliminary activities that you have to do before you really even know what the project is. So this reimbursement period I'm talking about would be your hard construction costs and not any of the planning costs. So again, kind of first step in this process, simply recite your authority to do this, authorizes bonds for it, and preserves your right to reimburse any cash that you might spend in the meantime before the bonds are issued for this project. And I will stop there and be happy to address any questions.
Brad, are you comfortable with that estimate?
I am, yes.
Any questions from the commission? Right, Brian, any questions?
I do not.
I would entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven, authorizing the project to replace water meters within the city of High Waltham.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the adopt resolution twenty twenty four eleven. Any further discussion? Not, Don?
All in favor?
Aye. Motion passed five zero. Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate you being on.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to number six, traffic signals.
So this one is very similar to the water meters. Kevin, did you have anything to add here?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm probably back up here. It is similar in, in big picture context. It's the first step, and you're going to identify what the project is and an estimated cost and authorize bonds and, you know, preserve your right to reimburse all those things. The one thing that I will point out is it's, if you hadn't noticed, it's two documents. One's an ordinance designating main traffic ways, and the other one's the authorizing resolution. And the statute under which we're operating relates to main traffic ways. And there's no doubt that the, the two streets and highway that intersect here are main traffic ways, but it, the statute requires you to designate those as main traffic ways. And once you do that, it's a very broad statute that allows you to do just about anything to improve a main traffic way. So that's what the ordinance does, recites that you can designate main traffic ways. And then in section one, it's just designation of US seventy-three slash First Street and also Oregon Street as main traffic ways. And I'll add, in case anybody has noticed or has knowledge of this, Oregon Street a long time ago, and it's something, I don't know if I worked on it, but I've worked on a project on Oregon Street as a main traffic way. I think it's Oregon Street and not US seventy-three, but one of these has been designated as a main traffic way before, years ago, under ordinance, yeah, it's ordinance number C dash eight fifteen, US seventy-three. And so I, because Oregon Street was gonna be designated anyway, I thought we may as well list them both again and have a more recent ordinance that designates those main traffic ways. So again, if you notice that, that's kind of the thought behind it. But that's, again, the step that you all can take that identifies, designates these streets as main traffic ways, important thoroughfares. And with that designation, it allows you to issue bonds to, to make the improvements, which are going to be the traffic signal improvements at that intersection. And again, if you take the time to ever kind of sort through some of this, there is a laundry list of things you can do to improve a main traffic way. Probably twenty-five, thirty things that are listed there, but one of the things listed is signalization and traffic control devices. So this is, this is the statute that applies pretty directly to what we wanna do here. So again, I'll stop there, except one final thought. The estimated cost is seven ninety-five, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, and I know you all have talked about this a lot, Brad's worked on it a lot, but, but again, that's the estimate, and the final sizing will be based on either, you know, an actual construction contract or, or comfort that that's the right estimate as we move forward.
Any other questions for Kevin? If not, I would entertain, we have two motions to make here, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one thirty-two, designate First Street and Oregon Street as the main traffic ways in the city of High Waltham. Oh, second.
Then moved in second to adopt ordinance twenty-one thirty-two. Any further discussion? Not, Don?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All votes?
Motion five zero. And I will make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, authorizing improvements to certain main traffic ways within the city of High Waltham.
I'll second.
Moving in second to adopt resolution twenty-four dash twelve. Any further discussion? Not, Don? All in favor? Aye. Motion passed five zero. Thanks again, Kevin.
You're welcome.
And just keep it rolling on to number seven, resolution twenty-four dash thirteenth.
All right, this is, this also covers part of, very similar to the last two resolutions that we've done. I kind of, did you have anything to add on this one?
Yeah, this, and Brad, you and I had communicated a little about this. This is what we typically call the sale resolution. So you've, you've now authorized bonds. And the next step would be to say, well, we're authorized to issue bonds. Let's authorize the sale of the bonds, the steps that are necessary to get bonds sold. And that's what this resolution does. One of the things, and it's, it might be the driver of, of trying to get this done tonight as, as opposed to a little bit later, is some of you may recall, perhaps not, a couple of years ago, there was quite a bit of discussion related to a refinancing of some Series B twenty-twelve bonds. And the refinancing worked, savings were okay, maybe not great. And so there was some thought that maybe we wait and, and hope for lower interest rates, and that did not happen over the two years. So Piper Sandler, your financial advisor, has been sort of monitoring that through the years. And with the interest rate drops in the last month or so, we're closer than we've been in a while. And maybe if we cross our fingers, there will be even more improvement. So one of the things that this does is not only authorize kind of necessary steps to get ready to sell the bonds for the two projects we just discussed, but also if the refinancing of the twenty-twelve bonds works, we want to do that as well. And it actually sets a parameter for a minimum level of savings, which is two percent of the present value of those twenty-twelve bonds. And that's, that's kind of an industry standard, that if you can get two percent savings, that's a good deal. So if the governing body is willing and adopts this resolution, it will authorize city staff and I as bond council and Piper Sandler to kind of start doing the things necessary to get ready to sell bonds next year. And actually, particularly as it relates to the refunding, to be kind of nimble if something happens, and maybe this moves a little faster than has even been discussed, then this is a preliminary step that will have already been taken. One of the primary things that gets done is a preliminary official statement will be prepared, and that's the name for a prospectus, like a stock prospectus, but in the municipal bond world, it's called a preliminary official statement. And that takes a little bit of time, gathering information about the city and financial information. So that work will probably begin with Piper Sandler and, and I pretty quickly. But again, the thought is, let's get some of that work done. So when it is an opportune time to sell bonds, you know, this will have authorized those things to happen. And the last thing is, this doesn't mean, you know, you would adopt this tonight, and then you don't hear about the bonds again until, you know, somebody's presenting you final sale numbers. There will still need to be some sizing, precise sizing based on, as we discussed, maybe actual costs through a bidding process on the two projects, and then also kind of where, where are we in the refinancing market? All those things would, would come into play, but certainly Piper Sandler, who would go price and sell these bonds, is going to be in communication with Brad as we sort of lead up to when is a good time to sell the bonds. So. When is a good time to sell the bond, so again, this. This is just that next step, it's not the final step, it does not. Require you to sell the bonds, it's not authorization of a final amount or anything, just kind of. Some of the preliminary steps that it's good to get out of the way uh because they're required, but. But also as we get closer and and maybe want to move quickly to get the bonds sold, this will have been done already. So again, I'll stop there and happy to address any questions.
I think that sounds like a good idea. I'm trying to make a motion then.
Yes, I made a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen. Authorizing for the sale of the uh general obligation bond series twenty twenty five. For the city of Iowa, Kansas.
I'll second.
Been moving second to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen, any further discussion? Not on, on favor, aye. Motion pass five zero. Okay, Kevin, I think you're done now.
Yeah, well, thank you, uh I wish I could have been there in person tonight, that was my plan, but thank you for accommodating me.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Kevin, I'll give you the document sent out tomorrow. Okay, moving on to um eighth fire station discussion.
Great news. We have a fire truck back in operation that the engine got replaced. Even better news, the new fire truck shows up next week. Which leads us to why I'm standing here today. We have a housing problem now. We don't have enough room, if you guys have been aware that we've been looking for. Pricing for an addition or a new fire station, which those prices are obviously astronomical. Meeting with Brad last week or two weeks ago, we have our capital improvement. Dollars and meeting with you all as well and that meeting as well, this this has to find a solution, well. Taking that back to the firemen. We have come up with a couple of options that. Like to have your blessing to send out to bid for. So I know it's. Maybe not necessarily. The best idea, but it is a good idea, I think. One of the ideas is actually expanding a new gas station. Not adding on to it, but just expand to, there's an old office area, there's a big paint glass, we can have that. Framed in and a garage to rent it. Or option number two would be to add a new building. On the backside of the fire station where we already have the addition. The idea would be to actually tear down that existing building because it leaks, we've tried many, many things and tried not to leak, but it still does. And then replace it with a twenty. Like a twenty two or twenty four foot, but come back there with one garage door that's twenty feet wide. Now, I have reached out to a couple of contractors just to give ballpark figure. Of what that would cost and if you remodel the gas station or if they can hide in thirty thousand, if you put a new. A little addition on the back to house two brush trucks, and we're talking somewhere around fifty thousand dollars on that. But that takes, and the reason I I would. Is that we're not taking that full capital dollars that we have and blowing it on a building that. May or may not last for long. And you know Brad talked several times of. You know, when making a fire station, you know, a new fire station, a ten year plan, well, by. Only spending, say, fifty thousand dollars. That leaves us some money to maybe expedite that and and apply for those grants and have the money set behind. If we was to be awarded an eighty twenty or a ninety two, ninety two grand. So that is the problem, so my my ask of you tonight is to ask to send out bids. To either A, have the old gas station remodeled for a stall. Or a new building out back.
Now, if you do the new building out back, does that mean you're going to tear down the gas station?
No. There's no way you're going to get rid of the gas station. If we do the remodel of the gas station, we are going to tear the whole off.
Did you say the roof's leaking, is that what's leaking?
The roof is not leaking, the ceiling has fallen down in the. Uh where the apparatus currently are and we've kind of come to the conclusion, we can get some. Two inch insulation insulation and if this is the option, we would have to, you know, have a contractor go in and put the insulation in there to help with the heating costs. But no, the the roof is leaking on the building addition.
Do you have a preference on either one or you're?
I do not. I think either one of them is viable option.
This is what's a roof, like on that gas station, the dead old water.
It, I mean, it doesn't leak, that's, I mean, the old gas station does not leak, it does, the the old ceiling has fallen down or is continuing to fall down.
Could you just tear that down the rest of the way and then spray foam on the inside of that building?
I don't know if we would spray foam it because that would that would be a couple thousand dollars to spray foam, but I was thinking of, you know, just the, you know, the two inch insulated paintboard that we could throw up there to to help with the. The heat. Would be my recommendation, but I wouldn't want to put this, wouldn't want to.
Yeah, station.
No, the new truck would actually go into the existing building and we would move it uh different apparatus over there.
And those garage doors aren't insulated, are they?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yes. Well, one of them does, one of them's on. I don't want to hang a shank there in a haunted house by putting a whole bunch of money into that. Old gas station, but I mean, it is viable.
Wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed to that, if it's something you all think you can live with.
I mean, it's a short term solution, we could put a couple thousand, well, we could put, you know, ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars at it. While we're raising funds, applying for grants to actually have a fire station built.
So do you just want to go out for bid on both options?
I do, I I I mean, is, I mean. The firemen of one, you know, we've talked about this and the commission meeting before, you know, the firemen of the one that came up with this, I feel like, hey, you know, that's something that we didn't look at, so. And I don't, I'd really like to save as much money as possible. But I'd like to be able to have those bids and bring it back to you, discuss with you, discuss with the department and see what is the best option for us.
I don't have a problem with it.
You don't have a problem?
With you going out and getting bids, um I'm just.
Like it, like that idea?
Well, I would much rather see you have something more permanent.
Well, I would too.
Which, yeah, we all would, but uh you have to do what you have to do. Uh you have to have a home for your, for your new truck.
Right. Well, you know, we're going to get this truck, we have the water department, you know, north of town, you know, and that's a great option. But when we need it, it's not the easiest to get to, so that's kind of the whole thought process, doesn't bring that back to the fire station that way. We don't have to go two and a half. And then maybe have to go south there, so. But since it is over. The, my spending power, probably Brad's. My goodness, your blessing.
We need a motion for that. Brian, did you have something to say?
I was just asking, do we need a motion to allow the. Fire, fire department to go out for bid for remodeling the. Gas station and and a possibly a new building out back.
So was that a motion you just made, Brian?
Yes.
I'll second it. You were saying something that we didn't hear, so I'll second his motion.
So it's been moved to second and whether you like it or not. So moving to second to go out for bid for our station remodeling for the discussion? Not on, on favor, aye. All opposed? Motion pass five zero.
Thank you. I mean, this is foreign territory for me, but this is a city.
All the bits stuff out together, then we we can get it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to. Communications, Brad, you thinking?
Uh no, we just have the October twenty twenty four fire runs, uh they have a couple of judges report. The day of the Capitol fire. Um that will be, I believe that's January twenty ninth. Yes, that's January twenty nine, twenty twenty five, uh they do this every year. And they they allow people, they allow, especially commissioners, come down, see the Capitol, show the meat day, we also have. The. Election certification. And so that's all, that's all of the communications.
Any questions for Brad? Not, and we will move on to city administrator comments.
I just have one tonight, it's just about the airport project. Uh that airport project, which was a runway lighting project for the municipal airport. Was completed last week, final inspection was done. Uh there's a new rotating beacon out there, I'm sure everybody's probably seen that by now. It was uh kind of caused some problems the first couple of nights, but I believe we have that adjusted down to where it's uh not blinding anybody who wants it. The airport, I want to point out, that if you go in, if anybody goes out at night, they don't see that the airport lights for the runways are on. That is actually on purpose, these airport lights are meant to be turned on by the pilots as they come in. They're going to be able to get on their radios, click the radio three times and it'll actually turn those runway lights on to them. That will save energy costs in the city over the course of, over a course of time. And so if they, if you don't see them on at night, that's actually on purpose, um it was a great project. You know, they they the contractors moved really fast and it's it's nice to see improvements.
Yes, the beacon hasn't always been blue, has it?
No, it it was, I remember there was one out there uh one time before, but the. Colors that they have out there now are, it's kind of a. Deep green.
I noticed it was different.
Yeah, and 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 a clear, and so the clear was the one that was causing problems, that was really kind of, it was very, very bright. We were shining it on a house. We're shining it on a house a half mile away, it's hitting the. I had to go on Friday and it was, it was still cooling. It was, it was, it's quite impressive. Hopefully those problems.
You know, with that, that, I have to say this, it reminds me of Christmas vacation.
Moving on to governing bu- governing body comments, um all I have is just wanted to wish everybody, um city employees and everybody else. Uh happy Thanksgiving since. We're on that Thanksgiving week, it's amazing how fast we're this year is going, so happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Well, I'm thankful for many things, but right now I'm thankful for all our city employees and all the good work that they do, so thank you everybody.
Well, yes, I want to wish everybody a a very happy Thanksgiving and uh. And I'm going to toss this in, I may have lost the election, but I'm still a winner. Because I'm thankful that I've had. This experience of serving Iowa and the community. And uh it's been, it's just so much been my pleasure and. And privilege to have had this uh opportunity to sit up here with these fine people and. And work with the staff and. I just want to thank you all, um. The other thing I want to say and not forget is I want to give a special thanks to Don Loyles. Uh for making City Hall uh a festive Christmas. That Christmas tree downstairs in her office. To say awesome, spectacular, whatever, there's not a word for it, I've never seen a more beautiful Christmas tree. And I've never seen a Christmas tree in that circular room and it's fantastic, thank you, Don. Happy Thanksgiving, Tom, thank you.
It was quite the group putting it up, wasn't it?
And I understand there's more to come.
Was there RIPS part of the deal or? I'm not going to give it up, so, um Brian?
I do have something, um one eleven Miami is one of the houses on the hair down list and. I would, I I think it would be a great idea to solicit bids to get that torn down. Um as soon as possible, I I just, I feel like it's a safety concern. A lower two, two foot of sightings missing off of it and I just. I don't want to wait uh seven or eight, nine months before we can get that torn down, so. I I don't know what everybody thinks about it, but I'd like to make a motion to just solicit bids and see what it would cost to get that house torn down. With a contractor, uh I think it would be under two thousand dollars to just get it down now.
I agree. It it's bad shape. Very dangerous.
It is in very bad shape, um I noticed I drove by the house. You know, last week and I noticed that the house seems to lean more than it did before. I, you know, it's going to take us some time to get asbestos trained people there. If we wanted to move forward with doing something like this, we could sure do that and get us, get this one down sooner than later. I think that that'd be a good idea, I believe too.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second, I'll second. It's been moving a second to solicit bids for the demo of the house on Miami Street, any further discussion? Not on, on favor, aye. All opposed? Motion pass five zero. Anything else, Brian?
Nope, I don't have anything else, thank you.
Evans?
I just want to wish everybody happy holidays this week and uh thank you for the great group of people that uh. Work for the city because it sure does make our job up here a lot easier too with all of you guys doing everything to help us, so thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Moving second, on, on favor, aye. All opposed, motion pass five zero, everybody?